Having been advised by the town clerk that we have quorum, I'll reconvene our 2024 annual town meeting. We just have a couple preliminaries tonight. I'd like to start with one item. If you could all remember to return your clickers when you leave tonight. We had two errant clickers overnight that were out in the wild. They had been hunted down by our crack staff in return, but if you could all please remember to return your clickers into the team outside, that would be most helpful. Second, I'd like to recognize Ms. Lynda Lee Sheridan has a brief announcement. Oh, one thing, everyone. When you go to your microphones, I've been informed by our IT team, you'll see a little grip down at the bottom. If you pinch it, the entire microphone rises and falls, and you don't have to take the mic out of the stand. So just pinch that little grip, and it'll rise and fall, and just to your height. Ms. Sheridan, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me? Closer, okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lynda Lee Sheridan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. And I rise tonight to invite you all to save the date. I'm sure you know what I'm going to talk about. It's the Annual Milton Music Fest and Fireworks, which is held up on Hutchinson Field, the weekend of June 22nd and 23rd this year. And as usual, we have an immense amount of activities for families. We have a giant sandbox, we have giant water slide, and a small one for the little tykes. We have face painting, kids' characters that come around, wonderful food trucks. Novara and Abbey Park will be there again this year. And all of this food and beverage is available to purchase. And this year, we're doing something special for the kids. Starting at 5:00, our first band will be focused on the children. It will be Wayne Potash Yodel for Fish. Some of you with young kids might know him. He's pretty popular around town. So his concert begins at 5:00, so you won't want to miss it. And the festivities, we have two bands following that, and the night closes out with the most spectacular fireworks you'll ever see overhead. So please pray for sun. And on Sunday, we have Irish music starting at 1:00 in the afternoon, and shuttle buses from La Boree, and I always say that, Fompón. Oh, my gosh, sorry. The Warren Committee Chair just told me that, yeah. Thank you to our signature sponsor, annual signature sponsor, the Copeland Family Foundation. Without them, this event would not be possible. And our many, many community sponsors that we have as well. Our website is wearmilton.org. We're a small group of only six volunteers that pull this event off, and we were just voted yet again by the Milton Times people that we are the best community event in town. So please mark your calendars and join us on June 22nd and 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Just a reminder, if at any point you cannot hear a speaker tonight, please just shout out, and we'll have the speaker try to adjust the microphone so that everybody can be heard clearly tonight. Also, on clickers again, remember, please don't touch anything other than one, two, or three, otherwise you could reprogram your device. So just for good government here, we'd like to do a test vote again. So if we could open up the poll, and we will test that all your clickers are working and they are communicating with the receiver. And it looks like the breakfasts have it. They're all good citizens. All right, team, could we display the, all the members and their votes? We can check in to make sure you see your vote up there? If we could scroll left? I know. Just a question, ladies and gentlemen. If you could all look at the back of your device and make sure you see your name on Does everyone have a device with their name on it? If not, if you could see me? Folks, we're going to run the test again. So the poll is now open. If you could vote on breakfast once again to confirm your device and our software is I see we have one person with a challenge. Any other problems with devices? Please see Mr. Mallett up front. All right, while they are taking care of that, I've had a request from Ms. Caroline Kinsella of the Board of Health. In the, I hope we are able to complete our business tonight, but in the event we cannot, she has a conflict tomorrow and is asked that she's going to be asked to answer questions, she thinks, on two articles, 22 and 39. Would the body be willing to advance 22 and 39 to the beginning of the meeting so we get them done tonight? So, thank you. On Article 22, so move here a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. It's unanimous. On Article 39, entertain a motion to move to right after 22. Is there a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. It's unanimous. Okay, we will then start with Article 22. Let me find that in your warrants. It's on page 40. Recommended that the town appropriate the Mount Short in the following tabulations under the heading Recommended FY25, total Board of Health $420,252. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? I think someone pulled it out the other night. If so, please come to the front. And ma'am, you're recognized.
Hi, Susan Koch-Baser, Precinct 4. Is it not on? Susan Koch-Baser, Precinct 4. Turn it towards me also. See, you give us all these instructions and still. All right, Susan Koch-Baser, Precinct 4. And the question I had was about the opioid funds. I had two questions. First, how much is now in the special revenue fund that's available to Milton? And what are the plans for using those funds? And have any Milton residents impacted by the opioid crisis been involved in the decision-making process for how we will use those funds? Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Kinsella, can you come address the body? Are all those questions clear, or should I repeat them?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Caroline Kinsella. I'm the Health Director. I'm a Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. And I'd like to give an overview of the opioid settlement monies. This will only take a couple of minutes. So on July 21st, 2021, Attorney General Mara Healy, now Governor Mara Healy, announced a $26 billion resolution with opioid distributors and Johnson &amp; Johnson, which will provide more than $500 million to the Commonwealth cities and towns. On November 15th, 2022, Attorney General Healy announced a $3 billion nationwide resolution with Walmart. And on November 23rd, 2022, she announced another $6.6 billion with drug makers Teva and Allegra. And on December 12th, 2022, she announced again a proposed $10.7 billion nationwide resolution with CVS and Walgreens. So what does that mean for the town of Milton? Great news, because the town of Milton will receive over $1 million through the year 2038. And this money will roll forward if it's not spent every year. So we've got about 16 years, yep, that we're going to be spending this money. And it has to be spent in seven categories. So the categories that were identified by the state are opioid use disorder treatments, like peer recovery coaches, supporting people in treatment and recovery, including people with lived experiences by providing transportation or help in recovery, connections to care to support school-based services, harm reduction and Narcan training, addressing the needs of criminal justice-involved persons, diversion or recovery and support, supporting pregnant or parenting women and their families, including babies with neonatal abstinent... And number seven, prevention misuse of opioids and implement prevention education, supporting community coalitions in developing and implementing a comprehensive strategic plan for substance misuse prevention. So the Health Department has been receiving guidance from the state and recently has had two webinars, and those were two weeks ago. So the state is reviewing how to allocate the settlement monies. The Health Department has received technical assistance from JSI, the John Snow Institute, and CARE Mass, which shared resources and answered questions about hiring a consultant to lead a community needs health assessment in Milton. Hiring a consultant was approved. It was an approved expenditure, and we're now contacting vendors for price quotes and scopes of services, because we want to find out how Milton residents would like to spend this money. We want to reach out to Milton residents. And how we do that is we create a survey, we have focus groups, strategic interviews, and interviews in the community, community forums, and we want to hear from people who have been impacted by opioids, if their family members have passed away, or if they have lived experience. We want to hear from you. We're also actively engaging with our shared service surrounding health departments. So Milton is also in shared service with Canton, Dedham, Norwood, Westwood, Walpole, and Wellesley to potentially pool the money for some programming for Milton. The settlement monies are being deposited into a special revenue fund, which will be overseen and seen by the Board of Health. So first steps are community needs assessment, and then finding out what Milton residents really need, what's the best way to help Milton residents, and then hopefully we can provide some grants to Milton residents to support in the future. So this is going on for many years, and as I said, it doesn't go away. The money will continue out till at least 2038 and beyond. So according to the state website, it's $155,000, but it's more than that. The first year, we got 75 and another 75, and we're continuing to get money every month.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Kinsella? Apparently, we're going to have to have a rapid battery change. Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, this is a majority article. If we could open up the poll, please. All those in favor of Article 2, please signify by pressing 1. Opposed, press 2. Want to? Do we have the votes in, team? Still coming in, okay. The motion carries with a vote of 224 to 1 with 1 abstention. With that, we'll proceed to Article 39, which will find on page 55 of your warrant. I won't read the entire article, but I'll say to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by inserting language in a new chapter, provided that the town clerk shall assign or amend the chapter number and section numbers as required. It's about recordings. So the essence of this is about recording all meetings of all boards and certain boards and committees, including Board of Assessors, Board of Health, Board of Park Commissioners, Library Board of Trustees, Planning Board, School Committee, Trustees of the Cemetery, and the Select Board. We have a recommendation that the town vote to refer the proposed bylaw back to the Select Board for further study. Given that, I'm going to recognize Chair Humphries of the Warrant Committee to describe the Warrant Committee's recommendation. Mr. Humphries, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Hiss. Good evening. We have a lengthy comment here. I will hit a couple of the highlights with regards to the article with regards to the recording of our public bodies. I think we all know how important having access to the recorded meetings of the town are. We all watch them. It helps us be informed citizens to be better Town Meeting Members, just to be aware of what's going on in our town, and then to be able to hold the people that we depend upon to lead us accountable. So this is a great article that's been brought forward to start to put some mandates or requirements on that. So the proposal was, there's a list of the Boards, Assessors, Health, Park Commissioners, Trustees of the Public Library, Planning Board, School Committee, Trustees, et cetera. And our deliberation, you know, we saw this as a start, we wanted to go farther. So we, as the Warrant Committee, were of the opinion that all boards and committees, all boards and committees should be recorded. Concerns were raised specifically with regards to Board of Health, Trustees of the Cemetery, with regards to, so we started to get into the weeds on this a little bit, of how are we actually going to handle the public broadcast of private matters, personal private matters that might come before, say, the Board of Health? That might not be privileged in the sense of where we could terminate the recording? There were questions with regards to whether or not executive session could handle that. The answer to that was not clear. One of the times that we, one can go into executive session, is that the discretion of a chair? We had concerns about how much power that might give an individual, what could some of the limitations upon that be? The point being is that when we started to review this and think about it, it became a little bit more complicated than was envisioned in this article. And so that was the basis of our recommendation, that based upon the need to do this, but on the other hand, the concerns that we had about the implementation, that it was our recommendation that it be referred back for further study to iron out and answer some of those issues and questions. That's our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Humphries. Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Richard Wells, Chair of the Select Board, the Submitting
Good evening. Richard Wells, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. I'm Chair of the people at this distinguished table to my left. I can't get that wrong, anyway, so. Previous board did vote to support this, and just as the Chair of the Warrant Committee had mentioned, I mean, for us, we come from the world of being recorded, our committees, our boards are. For me personally, I come from a world of sensitivity, where sensitive issues occurred quite often in life, so I understand the sensitive issue of it. We have not revoted as of yet, as Mr. Cohen has just joined the board, so if my colleagues would, I think what I'd like to do is hear the debate, hear the discussion, and perhaps weigh in later time. Is that okay?
It'd be fine, yes, yes.
Is that all right? Okay, thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Deborah Milbauer. Ma'am, you're recognized. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Deborah Milbauer, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. And in the 15 years I've served as Town Meeting Member, I think I've spoken once, and now I've spoken. This is going to be my second time, so bear with me. So, first of all, I want to thank the dozens and dozens of people who helped me pitch this article to the Select Board, and I want to thank the Select Board for taking it on, and for the Warrant Committee's thoughtful deliberations around it. So before I start, a show of hands, raise your hands if you have ever watched a recorded Milton meeting, or a clip of a recorded Milton meeting. Raise your hand. And look around the room right now. Okay. Raise your hand if you've ever thought, crap, I can't attend a meeting, but I wonder if it'll be recorded. Raise your hand. Look around the room. Okay. Excellent. Thank you, everybody. So, my name is Deborah Milbauer, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. I write to ask, I rise to ask for your support for Article 39, which requires all 10 elected bodies to record and post their meetings. I am asking town meeting members to not send the article back for further study, so a no vote, and then vote yes to pass the article. So no, not to send it back, and then yes to pass. Currently, it is voluntary to record and post recordings, post proceedings. Currently, it's voluntary to record and post proceedings. Five elected bodies do. They currently voluntarily do. So Select Board voluntarily records, School Committee, Planning Committee, Blue Hills Regional Tech, another school does that, and most recently, the Library of the Trustees, thank you very much, when they saw the article in the warrant in December, they started recording. So thank you so much. So that leaves five that don't voluntarily record. Boards of Health, Board of Health, Parks Commissioners, Board of Assessors, the Trustees of the Cemetery, and the Housing Authority. And the Housing Authority is exempt because it's a state-run authority, and Milton doesn't have control over it. So a couple of three points about the article. Subcommittees are not included in this article. For those agenda items of a personal nature, executive session protects resident privacy, which allows closed session for selected agenda items per Massachusetts state law. And lastly, I also support a friendly amendment, which will request to exclude retreats that do not conduct town business or take any votes, because I know some of the committees have retreats, so I support not excluding retreats. Okay, some context. COVID changed the way the town of Milton conducts meetings. Using Zoom and similar platforms is now ubiquitous. Unrecorded, in-person-only meetings seem antiquated, given the dramatic change in how the world now operates. Many people tune into meetings at home or watch the recordings later for various reasons: childcare duties, disability, lack of transportation, scheduling conflicts, or just sheer convenience. And shout out to those people watching at home right now, or who are going to watch the recording later. And thank you to Milton Access TV, who does such a great job on Tonight and recording some of our meetings. Milton Access TV has over 1,000 subscribers to their YouTube channel and 1,500 Facebook followers who watch the live broadcast of meetings, and I think it's even more now. This is a number from last year. And each of Jay Fundling's podcasts has a few dozen listeners. The, go Jay! The inability to access proceedings equitably across all elected bodies is problematic. All committees deliberate important content, not just the four mentioned above. Compelling all elected officials to record and post is a fair and equitable way to ensure that all of them do so. It is not appropriate that elected officials be in the position to decide if their own meetings will be recorded or not. Although Milton Access TV will not record meetings that are not in their contract, they have offered to post any recording that lands in the town's secure Zoom account, which town staff of elected bodies can access. User-friendly tabletop devices are available to boost quality and are easy to use. They're called owls, because they have those eyes that look like owls that follow you around. I am the resident who pitched this idea to the Select Board, who voted unanimously, the previous Select Board before the election, who voted unanimously to sponsor the article. The Warrant Committee also supports the idea, but ironically, as you heard, recommended to send the article back for further study so it can be expanded to include subcommittees. In an ideal world, it would be great to include them at some point, but not at this time. The Select Board does not support this, I've, my understanding, watching them debate, deliberate. The Select Board does not support this, nor do I, at this time. To quote two Select Board members, "We need to walk before we run," said Richard Wells and Ben Zoll, and I hope I'm quoting you all accurately. Unlike elected bodies, there are about 78 subcommittees in town, and that might be more or less, it's about. The subcommittees have no staff assigned to them. The elected bodies have a staff assigned to their bodies, and they're the ones that do minutes and recordings, and they're the ones that do a lot of the logistics and operational stuff. So there's over 78 committees, and they don't have any assigned staff. There's very limited capacity. A lot of them are just volunteers. Some definitely have elected members also, but many of the committees are just volunteer. And I would add that, thinking it through, if you actually were to include subcommittees, you'd really need to have a planful, you need to be planful about setting it up. The committees would need training, they'd actually need more money. Milton Access TV can't do this without more staff. They can't just do this for free. We'd have to buy more owls, there were like 1,000 a shot about. So it's not, it comes with a cost. So there's a lot of reasons not to include subcommittees, although it's a great idea.
You have about three minutes, ma'am.
Oh, shit. It will likely not return to town meeting, it will likely not return to town meeting. Select Board does not support including subcommittees, and therefore would not revise, I think, would not revise and resubmit, as Warrant Committee incorrectly implies in the warrant. Let's not perfection, let's not let perfection be the enemy of the good. The Warrant Committee's second reason to send it back is out of concern for protecting resident privacy. They want to identify the most appropriate course of action to best keep personal information confidential, which is what's written in the warrant. I agree 100%. Yet the solution is not to send it back for further study. The solution is to normalize the use of an already existing law that allows for closed session during agenda items of a personal nature. This would be an improvement over current practice in which the Boards, Health, and Cemetery discuss personal resident information currently, right now, at their open meetings for anyone in attendance to hear. So it would be an improvement. There are 10 lawful reasons that the mass state law states to allow executive session, and the number one reason of the 10 reasons is to protect resident privacy. And I am thankful that the, and it's easy enough if, to adopt executive session, it's easy enough. You can get trained, you can run it by Town Council or Town Administrator to say, is this okay? Is this the appropriate use of executive session, until you get used to doing it. I'm thankful the Warrant Committee agrees that recording and posting meetings is a great idea. I understand their desire to expand the article to subcommittees, and I appreciate their intent to protect resident privacy. Both are well-meaning. Yet, if we send the article back for further study, neither will happen. Let's take the first step with elected bodies. In the meantime, let's encourage subcommittees to record voluntarily for now, and I'm happy to help train some of these subcommittees.
Ma'am, you have about a minute.
Government accountability requires people to pay attention. Now that technology and social norms have evolved, the time has come for all of Milton's elected bodies to be recorded and posted for all voters to see. As The Washington Post aptly says, "Democracy dies in darkness." Thank you for your consideration. Vote no to send it back, and then vote yes to pass. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Go to Mr. Matthews, next. Folks, you just go, it might be a lot easier just go to the mics right there. It's supposed to be everybody coming up front. We'll zip along here. And again, you can grip that thing and pull it up. There we go. You are an IT guy, you should be able to do this. There we go. That's right.
Hi, Scott Matthews, Precinct, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I wasn't sure if the batteries got updated, so. I resolved myself to come up and speak to this, because I chickened out in talking about it in the previous one.
A little closer to the mic, please.
Sorry, I chickened out in talking about it in the previous one, and it got sent back. Luckily, most of what I'm going to, I wanted to say, Deb did so well. So I'm rising to support this article, because as was pointed out before, you know, access to information, access to information about our government matters. There's so many of us who are here that probably don't always have time to go to these meetings, these public meetings, and get all the information they need to be able to successfully vote on what we have, and/or take part in things during the town. We're the ones who are like very active in this, and think of all the other residents who don't have access to it, who aren't there. There's so many times I've heard misinformation going out about what's going on in the town, partly because people aren't necessarily at these meetings. So I think it's very important that we record and make sure that these meetings are out there for everyone to have access to at any time that they need to. Again, Deb successfully talked to some of the things that I had issue with, some of the suggestions to send it back, such as, you know, trying to expand this to others. I don't think it's the right thing to, we've gone so long without so many of these meetings out there. I don't think it's the right thing to still hasten these meetings, to go out there, to try to figure it out even more. If there is nothing wrong with this article, we can vote on it, and if we want to add to that, and add more meetings as we've, as we figure out the best way to do that, we can do that, but we don't have to stop this article to do it. And again, Deb successfully talked to, I didn't understand the point that was made about private matters in public meetings, because they're public meetings. If you're going to the meeting, you're going to hear it, so what's the difference if it's publicized out there on the, on TV? And again, as Deb pointed out, if there is a process to handle that, let's figure that out. But let's not send this back so that we have more of our, our town members to be educated on our process, on the things that are coming up for them, and for how they can take part in voicing their opinion to help our town. Because I think that this is a great opportunity that we all have, and I think we should share it as much as possible with the rest of the town, so that our town hears as many of our town members as possible, so that we can really speak for them. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The woman sitting next to Mr. Matthews, your Rex, please. Also, ladies and gentlemen, since this is just a motion to refer, and we could still debate the merits of the article later, if you could try to keep your comments to about three minutes, I gave Ms. Milbauer some time, because she was the original author of this, so if you could try to keep it pithy and short, that'd be very helpful. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, definitely, keep it short, because as the previous speaker said, the original speaker really laid-
Could you name a precinct, please?
Oh, sorry. Janet Ferrone, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. As the two speakers before me said, I'm here to really just support the whole process of moving it forward. As was stated, we're in the time where everything is on Zoom, everything is recorded, everything is digital. We've been hearing pretty much in every article the importance of disability, the importance of access, and this is clearly, we'd be going against disability access if we did not move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Go to Ms. Hodlin, I think you were next.
Chris Hodlin, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2, and I'll be very brief, but also want to just reiterate what's already said. I also support a no vote on the Warrant Committee recommendation, and ask that you vote for this. I'm also one of the Library Trustees, and after this article was tabled, after the December meeting, the next meeting that we had, the Library Trustees, we voted to record our meetings, and we have been doing so since then. I don't see where the privacy issue, I don't see where the privacy issue is appropriate here, because as has said, our meetings are open. Anyone can show up to the meetings, the agendas are online, and you can be there and hear what's going on, and we have an executive session to reserve the right for private conversations if that needs to be. So, and I also just want to say, in 20-plus years on Town Meeting, we've turned back many articles for more study, and they haven't come back. So let's take some action on what we can do, and worry about the other at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rose Maron.
Hi, Ada Rose Maron, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member. I also rise to support Article 39, and urge my fellow Town Meeting Members to also support this article, and have, I've had a fair amount of experience with this in my time on School Committee, in School Committee meetings, with joint meetings with the Select Board, with School Building Committee meetings. The School Building Committee has been using the owls very successfully in their meetings that are public and available for everyone to see, but also that all elected officials are required to be trained in the open meeting law. And the open meeting law has very clear requirements around executive session. And as Ms. Milbauer mentioned earlier, there are 10 reasons that are permitted for, to go into executive session, and in your agenda, you have to state specifically why you're going into executive session. And I think those committees that are concerned about privacy and confidentiality, which I think is very reasonable and very real concern, there are reasons in those list of 10 reasons that will cover that concern. So I think because of that, and because of the broader access to all of town boards and goings-on, I support this article, and hope the rest of you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Varela.
Sheila Varela, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. I also rise in support of this article and recommend to vote no on the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, because I too, with fellow speakers, Ms. Rose Maron, I always served on the School Committee with her, and I've been a Town Meeting Member for over 20 years, and chaired many operational overrides. And I just want to hit home the point that education is the way we move forward, and I think having the access to the actual meetings, and not a lot of the stuff that goes on social media and the back and forth, when you can click on it and watch it for yourself, and make your opinion, and get it from the horse's mouth, it's going to help us maybe move forward in a more positive light. And when I think back 20 years ago, and we didn't have the access to do that that we do now, we should continue to move forward. I also agree that putting something back, Ms. Hodlin said, we don't ever see it again. And I really think it's a positive thing to let all the people in the town be able to have, you know, access to all open meetings, with all the things that have been described here, because not having that, and not having the correct information, is what I think stalls us and doesn't move us forward. So again, I recommend a no vote on this, and to support the article. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, in red, please.
Hi, Regina Malley, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. I have a question.
Yes.
So it's more about, why is executive session not a good option? So I totally understood that the Board of Health and the Trustees of the Cemetery talk a lot about private information and resident information and privacy, and I work in HR, and, you know, I get it, with HIPAA and everything else, but why, I'm just trying to understand, I think the Chair of the Warrant Committee mentioned that in order to do executive session, it would be up to the Chair of that Board, right? And that that might be too much control for one person. But if you could just elaborate a little bit more on, again, like why it's not, why executive session isn't a feasible option for those Boards? Because you can have a meeting, right? A portion of your meeting that can be public, and then you can continue- A portion of your meeting that can be public, and then you can continue right into executive session. It's not like it's an extra meeting where, you know, more, you know, I, I'm just not understanding why it's such a hurdle. So if someone could just talk about why that, why that is.
Yes, can do. Uh, Mr. Wells, can you address this or is it a town council question? You're discussing that? Okay. Mr. Wells, you're recognized. Pardon me? Town council, town council, could you please answer this question?
Sure, um, happy to address it. And I, I answered a similar-
Could you state your name again, please?
No, I'm sorry.
Nice and loud. Thank you.
Peter Mello, town council, uh, Murphy Hasitumi in Lahane, Office of Town Council. Can everyone hear me? Um, I, I answered a similar question back in October, I think it was, when I met with the warrant committee on a predecessor, um, or essentially the same article that was on a predecessor warrant. And the, the thing is with executive session, there are, um, various enumerated purposes. Sorry, I brought my laptop because I, I just pulled up an open meeting law determination from the Division of Open Government that I think is instructive, and I just wanted to read a quick excerpt from it. I'll arrest that here for a second. There are various enumerated purposes for which a public body can enter into executive session. It requires a vote of the public body. I think there was a reference to, um, the, the chair of a body having unilateral authority to enter a new executive session. I'm, you know, I'd have to hear more about that, I'm not familiar with, um, I, you know, the, the statute lays out the process through which a public body enters a new executive session and, and the bases upon which a public body can enter a new executive session. I think based on, um, some of the current concerns I've heard expressed at the warrant committee meeting back in October and, um, and so far this evening, uh, you know, Board of Health, I think, um, the most prominent concern seems to revolve around privacy issues. Um, you know, there are, it's a difficult thing to talk about in the abstract because it's intensely kind of fact-specific and intensive, and whether the circumstances are sufficient to warrant going into executive session can depend on the, the circumstances at issue. You know, purpose one, for example, provides a basis to talk about, uh, someone's mental health. I'm not sure that that would extend necessarily to a more expansive discussion about, you know, whether to take enforcement action, um, on a Board of Health matter, for example. I'm just, you know, I'm concocting a, you know, a hypothetical, you know, this isn't specific to any particular matter, but, um, it, it would depend on the circumstances. Might circumstances warrant going into executive session to discuss someone's, you know, competence or mental health theoretically, but then, you know, you, that might not provide the basis to expand the discussion beyond those parameters. You can talk about, um, you know, whether to, uh, consider filing a criminal complaint. There's some instances where, uh, a public body is considering taking enforcement action that might involve, you know, potential criminal liability. There's something of a catch-all. Um, I, well, I, catch-all might be a misnomer in this context. I'm not, I don't mean to suggest that it's, you know, kind of anything goes, but purpose seven allows you to rely upon a stand, a statute essentially that, um, that, uh, you know, um, allows or provides some privacy protection. But, and that's, that was the provision with respect to which I wanted to read this excerpt because I, I think it's, you know, kind of instructive. It's not some, you know, it doesn't give you carte blanche to go into executive session anytime you perceive there to be a sensitive, you know, privacy concern. And the excerpt that, that I had in mind, um, essentially said that, um, someone, there was an attempt by a board or a public body to invoke purpose seven on the basis that the matter at issue, um, was something that would be encompassed within the scope of the privacy exemption under the Public Records Law, uh, exemption C. And effectively, I, I won't pull it up because I have to refresh my screen and type in a password and all that, but basically the gist of the Division of Open Government's conclusion was that, uh, that, that didn't suffice, at least in that circumstance. So, um, I know it's not, it, it might be unsatisfying to, to some people because it's not cut and dried and it's, it's not like a one-size-fits-all thing. It, it's very fact, you know, circumstance, uh, dependent. But as I see it, based on the kind of concerns that I've heard expressed, I think, you know, in, in any particular circumstance, purpose one might be, um, available, you know, uh, purpose seven probably, those would probably, probably would be the most prevalent. You know, there are other, the, other instances like, uh, litigation where there's a, uh, threatened or pending litigation, um, that's suffices to, um, you know, as a basis to invoke the execu-, uh, executive session, uh, process, there's a, a variety of others. But, um, it's, it's very kind of fact-dependent and, um, circumstance-specific.
Okay. Thank you. I think I had Ms. Swenson next, and then Ms. Agostino and Mr. Mullen. Ms. Swenson, yes?
Yes, uh, thank you, moderator hiss, Denny Swenson, town meeting member, um, precinct five. Um, so a little bit of my takeaway is that it's not as cut and dry to just be able to go into executive session. You know, some, some, I was on the planning board for five years, I was very comfortable, everything was, uh, public. But there are some boards, I, I imagine the Board of Health, um, or, you know, some of these financial or assessors, you know, all these committees that we form all the time, um, where a personal matter might come up, um, you know, perhaps a hoarding issue or something that's actually very personal. You know, a family member might have a, um, drug use issue and it might come up in real time. And, um, as citizens of our town, we really appreciate when our volunteers and our committee leaders are very sensitive to these issues, but you can't in midstream without announcing, without, you know, we have to give notice. And some of these meetings, as they're happening in real time, you can't really stop them and say, oh, now we're in executive session without the proper notice. It seems like it would be very- Excuse me?
Excuse me, let's not, let's address to the moderator, please. Thank you.
It's my understanding that executive session has to be posted with 48 hours' notice. So, um, and the other, um, thing that I wanted to be considered is that sometimes it's hard to get, um, people to attend these meetings and, um, some of these hard issues that come up in our communities that our, our volunteer boards are dealing with, um, you know, we, we want to be extra sensitive to anyone who's disenfranchised in any way. And, you know, there are things like domestic violence and, and drug addiction that, that hit some of our families, and we just want to be really sensitive to that. And, and I, I'd like to better understand the executive session things that our, our town council was explaining to us that are not always cut and dry. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Agostino, you're recognized. I'm sorry. Oh, I missed it. I'm sorry. I missed that. You, you found your text?
Thank you, again, Peter Mello, um, Office of Town Council. I, I don't want to belabor it, but I, I found the excerpt, I'll just read quickly from it. According to the, this is, uh, I'll scroll, a Gloucester Retirement Board, just a decision involving the Gloucester Retirement Board from, uh, 2022. It says, "According to the open session minutes of the board's August 28th meeting, the board chair announced the purpose for the board's executive session as to comply with or act under the authority of any general law," um, the purpose seven, um, provision that I mentioned. I won't read all the, the text of it. That, the, the law that they were invoking in this instance was exemption C, the one that I mentioned, uh, of the Public Records Law exempting personnel and medical files or information and other materials or data relating to a specifically named individual, the disclosure of which may constitute an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy. And here's the key language, "A permissive exemption to disclosure of a record under the Public Records Law is, is the case for most of the Public Records Law's enumerated exemptions, does not mandate the type of confidentiality required to authorize discussion in executive session under purpose seven. For purposes of executive session, purpose seven, a permissive exemption under the Public Records Law stands in contrast to protection of a document that state law requires to be kept confidential." So that, my only point was that, um, it's not some, purpose seven isn't some magic salve that anytime you, you think that there's a, a sensitive personal issue, you can, you can invoke it to go into executive session. That might not be the case. It's all circumstance-specific and, and dependent.
So just to, so I understand.
Sure.
What you said is if a private matter comes up, a board just can't call an audible and call executive session automatically? It's, it's, uh, instance-specific? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, so it, uh-
Without repeating the whole thing, but that's the gist of it.
You need to rely upon a statute that basically mandates confidentiality is, is how I, I read it. Again, there might be some other basis to go into executive session, it all depends on the circumstances. And, and I, there was a question about, um, posting, you do have to post an executive session, you know, if it's a reasonably anticipated by the chair, um, you know-
Okay.
48 hours before the, the meeting. But, yeah, if something comes up on the fly and you need to, you know, there's this, I think the AG's office would say, if it can be, if it can be deferred to a future meeting in the subject of a posting, that's the, the better practice.
I see.
But there has to be, if you're gonna rely on purpose seven, there's gotta be an explicit statutory basis that basically requires the, the, you know, the discussion be kept confidential.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
And I think that's more rarely invoked.
Very good. Uh, now, Ms. Agostino, I think you were next.
Diane DeTulio Agostino, precinct nine, uh, Chair of the Commission on Disability. Mr. Moderator, since you did request clarification, the short version, can you just confirm that what he just explained then was in particular instances where, what was the term he used? The need for confidentiality, they could, uh, go into executive session? I mean, if someone needed a medical, um, intervention or something? I mean, is that what we just heard?
Let me re, see if I get this right, Mr. Mullen, he's saying executive session can be used for specific purposes, and there may be a case where confidential information is not sufficient for a body to go into executive session. And further, if I get, did I get that correct? Yes. And further, executive sessions have to be posted 48 hours in advance if the body has a reasonable expectation that they're going to need to go into executive session. Did I get that right? Yes. And that's an engineering degree right there, so. Is that, okay, that the clarification you sought?
So I think what I heard you say was the first portion, that if it was some emergency that came up, they could do it, but otherwise, um, if they know, they would have to post the executive session 48 hours.
With a reasonable expectation, they have to post it within 48 hours. That's what I heard, yes.
Thank you very much for clarifying that for everyone. Um, everyone might assume why I'm standing. I actually was going to rise to make a friendly amendment to strike the Board of Health and the commissioners, I mean, the trustees of the cemetery, from the proposed article. However, listening to the brilliant discussion, I vacillated between yes and no. So I want to give you a little bit of history on Milton's, um, ability and the delayed response when other towns were providing public access. It was over 36 years ago.
Ma'am, Ms. Agostino, just, we're on, we're still on the motion to refer.
Right.
So if we could keep this very short, we'll have a chance to do history later.
Right. So the, the reason that I am beginning the historical is because the motion to refer should be denied, voted no. If I have that right, in fact, that's another thing I want to make sure with a lot of new town meeting members.
Yes.
Whether we're, sometimes people will vote, they think they need to vote yes, um, when it has to be no. So it was over 36 years ago that the district attorney, Bill Delahunt, um, provided the law, which is this Mass General 30A Section Two. And one of the speakers referred to, hey, they're public meetings, anyone can attend it. More important is the section that the district attorney provided that was presented at the first ever taped selectmen's meeting, because it was selectmen back then, I was not on the board, I was the one with the tape recorder. And it reads, "So therefore, referring this back makes no sense because after notifying the chair of a public body, any person may make a video or audit, audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair, has to the number, placement, operation of the equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform the other attendees because, as we all know, the moderator had to notify us all, that this meeting is being recorded." That's a state law. Um, I don't know if it's this law or another one. So my thought of amending-
Ms. Agostino, if you could wrap up your comments?
Yes. So, um, where, anyone can walk in and tape-record any of these public meetings. So I strongly encourage for those many Milton residents that you don't know about who are disabled and cannot attend meetings at all and who want to be involved, um, this is an opportunity to let them be involved. So thank you very much for your approval.
Thank you, ma'am.
To not refer back. You'll go over that.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Mullen, you're next.
Peter Mullen, town meeting member precinct two. I think I have a series of questions here. As I understand what we currently do, we have five boards, uh, whose meetings are recorded and broadcast, uh, through cable TV. And this, this article would expand that to a total of 10 boards. I don't know what if any staff is gonna be needed for these additional meetings. As I understand it, we have a contract, uh, with Milton Cable to do the five boards they currently do, but we don't have, uh, any cable, any contract. We don't know what the cost would be. I think one of the speakers mentioned that Milton Cable has said that they're willing to broadcast things that are brought to them. I don't really understand the concept of these owls that, uh, people say can record the meeting, but I don't know whether the staff of the committee is supposed to record those or not. So I think what I, uh, one of my questions would be to ask whether the, uh, town administrator or someone else could, um, tell us whether they think it's feasible, whether we're gonna have to send employees to, uh, meetings that don't currently attend meetings just to do the recordings. I also wonder what happens to the recording after the meeting? Does that become a town record? And, uh, is that the official minutes of the meeting? Are we gonna stop preparing written, uh, meeting minutes and use these recordings? I'd also be interested to hear if there's anybody here from the, the boards that are being added to this, whether they have, uh, any opinion one way or the other, whether it's a good idea or not. As I understand it, it's the assessors, the cemetery, um, I, the Board of Health, um, you know, if they could let us know what their position is on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So what I captured? Do we have the staff to cover the additional recordings? Do the recordings become part of the town record? Do the recordings replace minutes? And what do the expanded boards think of the new recordings? So with that, Mr. Milano, I think I recognize you about staff. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator. Good evening. Uh, Mr. Mullen, in response to your questions for staffing, um, it is an issue that we dis- discuss, uh, both with Ms. Bill Bauer and with the Select Board. For these bodies, um, staff is present at each of these meetings, um, already. It would be a matter of for the bodies that aren't recorded by Milton Access TV, um, to train staff on the equipment that the town currently owns, and we use, not quite on a regular basis, but a nearly daily basis already. So in terms of staffing, staffing, our staff already attend the meetings. In terms of equipment, uh, we do have two of the said owls, um, which are basically a webcam that goes onto a, a table, and it captures what's going on in the room. In addition, uh, the new conference room in the Fire Headquarters Building, um, is set up to, uh, be a remote, uh, conference room, um, as is one of the conference rooms, uh, in Town Hall, with equipment that already exists, uh, and is connected to the TV screens and the computers in the room. The recordings are, under the bylaw, required to be uploaded, whether to the Town of Milton website, to the Milton, um, Access TV YouTube page. Currently, what happens is meetings are recorded, uh, they go into our Zoom account, pull the recording, upload them to their YouTube page. Our plan would be to continue that process, record it through the Zoom platform, um, get them the recording, and they would upload it. There is no, um, requirement here that Milton Access come to each of these additional meetings and record them. We would record it with, uh, Town of Milton staff. That recording would be a public record, um, under the rec, Public Records Law. And then on minutes, um, boards and committees would still be required to do minutes under the open meeting law, uh, whether or not there is a recording, uh, of the meeting. I think those are the three that-
Were the opinions of the expanded boards consulted about this?
I, no, Ms. Milbauer spoke to several of them. I don't want to speak for those boards other than the ones that, um, have been represented so far tonight.
Yes, Ms. Gonsela, were you, you have a, a point on this? We did this, moved this to help you out. out.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Caroline Cincella, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight, Health Director. Town meeting members, the Board of Health and the Health Department wrote a letter of concern in October 2023 to the Warrant Committee regarding the new proposed bylaw to require video recording of meetings of elected public bodies. After further reflection pertaining to this potential new bylaw, the Board of Health and the Milton Health Department staff have concluded that video recording of Board of Health meetings may be detrimental to the mental health and personal well-being of residents. The Health Department is in a unique position to uphold and enforce state and local public health laws. Board of Health meetings cover a wide variety of public health matters, including tenant and landlord disputes. An example would be housing violations that come up, such as unsanitary conditions, cockroaches and mice, condemnations of houses or apartments. Recently, a resident was having her apartment condemned, but she did not want her son's friends to see a video on this, and I can't blame her. Neighbor disputes, trash or rodents, harborage in wood piles in neighbors' lawns, animal sanitation, complaints of horse manure, smells, chickens' smells, compulsive acquiring tendencies, mental disorders of hoarding and condemning houses, which are found to be unsanitary, and other mental health issues. In a past meeting, a resident spoke about his wife's health conditions, and in another meeting, a resident was threatening the Board of Health and appeared at our Board of Health meeting. Video recording of that meeting would have exacerbated the situation.
Ms. Cincella, about a minute left, if you would.
Oftentimes, when residents call to complain, they want to be anonymous, and they don't want to leave their name. Milton residents may be hesitant to video record a problem or sensitive issue that they may be struggling with in their life or in their homes, which will be recorded permanently for everyone to see. This would limit the Board of Health and the Health Department in serving the community. Residents may no longer trust the Health Department and not bring issues to us in the future. The Board of Health cannot predict unseen circumstances that can't go into executive session on the spot, or they can't stop recordings. This is about the privacy of our residents and some confidential issues that the Health Department works on every day. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nope, all set. Ma'am, I think in the orange, you may have been next. Thank you. Sorry, I don't know your name, so.
I'm about to tell you. I'm Christine Turnier from P4. So I just, right now, we are talking about public meetings, and I just want to make sure that I understand this. Like, I have right now in my pocket the ability to record and the ability to literally livestream onto Facebook. What prevents me from attending every single, if I had the time, oh, if I had the time, every single public meeting of all of these boards, saying, hey, friends and neighbors, I'm recording you right now, just so you know, and putting it on Facebook, or just putting it on my computer, and then also not being in the public record? I guess, I, given the fact that now we have this technology and this ability to make these recordings, and as long as we are upfront about the fact that we are recording them, I'm trying to understand what makes some of these concerns unique to what I have right here. So I guess my question is, what stops me from recording all of our public meetings right now and posting them?
Let me find out. Town Council, could you answer that question? Is there any prohibition on an individual recording a public meeting on a personal device?
Peter Mello, Office of Town Council. No, the, the short answer is, and I think someone mentioned it a few minutes ago, 30A Section, excuse me, Section 20, I think it is the, is the reference, confers explicit entitlement, if you will, upon attendees at meetings to record the meetings. The question of dissemination, I guess, is a separate question, but I don't think that, I don't think that any liability or claims could flow from one's posting or dissemination of a, recording of a, a public open meeting. So, but, but the short answer is that anyone can walk into an open meeting and record. You just have to advise the chair.
Very good. Okay. Set, ma'am? Okay. I think, sir, I think you're next. Yes.
Sean Bentley, Precinct Seven. So, oh, yeah, that's much better. Okay. Anyway, so I'm going to just keep this short and sweet. I know there are a couple of previous speakers who mentioned a concern. If this article was referred back to the Select Board, that it may not come, like, when it might come up again. So my question, I guess, would be to the Select Board, would you be willing to bring this article back up for consideration for the next town meeting? It'll probably be, I presume, in the fall. That's my question. Thank you.
Chair Wells?
So I believe the simple, Richard Wells, Precinct Seven, Chair of the Select Board. I believe the simple answer to Mr. Bentley's question would be yes. I'll be honest, I, when we did first vote on this, I didn't really, I don't think we really had all the info, the information regarding the sensitivity issue, as I said previously, and especially listening to Ms. Cincella. And what first brought this to mind was when the precinct, when the town meeting member from Precinct Four spoke about the COVID-ish, the opioid and fentanyl abuse issues that exist. These are things to include hoarding, mental health, things of that nature that are really hard. I always said to the police officers who worked in this town while I was in the police department, you can ride around in a police car all day long and not get out of that car and just look at the front doors of each home you pass, but you'll never really gain an understanding of what actually goes on behind those doors. Often, it's good, but sometimes it's very hard and very difficult. And as, sitting here, just understanding, this Town Council has described the strict parameters to how executive session, executive privilege can be used, I do see what Ms. Cincella is saying, that there are very sensitive issues that happen within a family, within a neighborhood, within a home, within a town, that could really prohibit them to want to come forward and be on tape. The woman who said, yes, I can tape, anyone could take out their camera right now and tape. They could do it. But I do understand the sensitivity of what's being brought up. So to make a long answer short, I think if it does get referred back, if it were to come to a next meeting, we would, yes, do that, as you've asked. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, after you're done speaking, if you could return back? Yes, ma'am, I think next to Mr. Walker, you, sorry, did, Mr. Mellow, do you have a clarification on that? Yes. Amend your further remarks, so to speak? You're next, ma'am. Just, we'll just wait for-
I guess just expand on them. I drew a distinction a minute ago between, I, is that better? Sorry.
Yes.
Peter Mello, Office of Town Council. I drew a distinction a minute ago between recording and dissemination. I just looked at Section 20, which is the statute I referenced, and it says, after notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body, or may transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair, as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any recording. So that 20, Section 20 actually explicitly addresses the, the question, so.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Rachel Posar, Town Meeting Member in Precinct Eight. I have sort of two things I'd like to talk about. The first is that I really appreciate Ms. Cincella sharing those situations in which a resident might want their privacy. And, you know, as somebody in the healthcare world, it really blows my mind that we're allowed to discuss those topics in any sort of public forum. I really think that we should be protecting residents' privacy to a greater extent than just hoping nobody shows up at a public meeting. The second point was, you know, there is a question in terms of whether there's a need to provide forty-eight hours notice prior to giving, or prior to starting an executive session. And just looking at the Mass General laws, it looks like that is the case when the purpose for the executive session is to discuss an individual's physical or mental health. However, another reason to go under, go into executive session that does not require forty-eight hours notice is to require, is to comply with a federal law. So HIPAA is a federal law. I wasn't sure if local boards of health were considered what's called a covered entity under HIPAA, which means that they have to comply with HIPAA. What I was able to find was that the Massachusetts Department of Health is considered a hybrid entity. So it engages in health surveillance and also healthcare delivery. So those public health surveillance activities, like reporting how many COVID cases happened during a certain time period, those are not subject to HIPAA. But healthcare delivery, for example, going in and mitigating a hoarder situation, my sense is that that may likely be considered covered activities. So my question for Town Council is whether local boards of health are expected to comply with HIPAA. If that is the case for their healthcare delivery activities, then that would allow these boards to go into executive session without notifying the individual or posting forty-eight hours of notice. Thank you.
Town Council? The question clear?
Peter Mello, Town Council. And by the way, I addressed the question a few minutes ago about notice. I guess, I just recognized the nuance that I hadn't considered when I was, when I had that in mind, I was thinking of the meeting notice. You know, for example, the, what people often call the meeting agenda, the meeting notice that's posted publicly, alerting people to the existence of a meeting. What I was saying is, you know, the best practice is to include reference to any anticipated topics, including executive sessions. And what the Division of the Government often says is that if something arises on the fly, that, you know, the chair didn't necessarily anticipate before the meeting, the best practice, you know, to the extent practicable or, or possible, is to, you know, defer the matter or the discussion to a, a future meeting, so that it can be included as a meeting notice. That's distinct from the notice that is required under Purpose One, when you're talking about notifying the subject of an executive session discussion under Purpose One. So that's, just to clarify that. Sure. So is that, is that better? Sorry.
Yes.
The HIPAA question, I'm, HIPAA is the technical, you know, kind of a voluminous federal legislation. You know, I think that, that excerpt that I read suggested that, you know, if, that if, there's got to be a, whatever statute you're relying upon to convene an executive session under Purpose Seven, has to be pretty specific and basically mandate your privacy. And I, again, if you're, whatever purpose you're invoking for Purpose Seven, or relying upon to invoke Purpose Seven, the, the discussion has to remain confined to that topic. And, and, you know, you, kind of at your peril via beyond those boundaries. That would be my concern. And it's not, it's not something that you can address. Again, I know it's not a, a perfect answer, because it's not a one-size-fits-all proposition. It totally depends on the circumstances. And if someone were to challenge it, if it were the subject of an open meeting law complaint, one of the, one of the, you know, remedies or, or results that can flow from a complaint about an executive, convening an executive session without, you know, a sufficient purpose is that the subject of the discussion, the minutes of the meeting of the executive session, can be required to be disclosed publicly. So it's something that you, you should, you know, with respect to which, you should tread pretty carefully, in my view. And that's what I usually, you know, caution, that's the approach I usually caution boards.
Can I pause you there, Mr. Mellow? So maybe a couple, just clarifying. Is the Board of Health content by default must be HIPAA compliant? I think that was the member's first question. Or if, if the answer is no, are there certain portions that must be HIPAA compliant? Was that the essence of the member's question? Yes, Ms. Posar? Yes. So was everything the Board of Health done, must it, must it be HIPAA compliant?
Does the, does the Board of Health's discussion need to, you know, we're in discussing a person's circumstances, does revelation of information that's protected by HIPAA, would that run afoul of HIPAA in a public meeting?
That's the question.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Is that a yes? It would?
I mean, I'm, I'm, let me-
Is it, is this beyond your purview? You may not know the answer, and that's okay to say, if you don't know.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a question, I'm, my, I don't, I'm not, you know, that's not my bailiwick.
Right. You're a Town Council, not a federal attorney here.
But I think that, basically, it's, it is a, the only thing that I'd like to give a little bit of thought to is, I think it probably would be problematic, but I, you know, I can't say that categorically or unequivocally, because it, you know, could depend on the circumstances. And the status of a municipality as a covered entity is, I'm not sure that that's, I'm not sure what the status of that is. That's something I'd have to take a look at.
Okay. So Ms. Posar, it sounds like we don't have a definitive answer for you either way, on the topic, if you're satisfied with that. I think, yes, here on my right, yes, sir, you're recognized.
Brian Kelly, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. Is, one of the solutions to this executive session might be posting that you're going to have an executive session for every meeting. I don't think there's a law against not going into it. Another thing, the Board of Health is a concern. Probably the trustees of the cemetery would be concerned also. So we could easily move on on this article, maybe by excluding those particular committees for now.
Well, we'd have-
Just one minute.
Just, we'd have to do that, if I could just make a point. We'd have to deal with the motion to refer and then come back an amendment, just so everyone knows.
The other issue would be, as far as the equipment, the owl, someone said a thousand dollars for the owl. I don't really think that we need to have a video recording of every committee. We could have audio recordings, which are much smaller files and much quicker to upload, and we could probably do it right to the Town of Milton website, right under the particular committee that you represent. Simple. So I think it's not going to be as complicated as we're making this right now, and we could probably move forward this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. J, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Dillon, I think you were next. Is that right? Or was it Mr. Walker? Mr. Walker, yes.
Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten. I think we've lost a little bit of focus here. So, let's recap. All of the boards that we're talking about are public boards. By that, their very nature, that means that the proceedings that those boards conduct in public are accessible to the public. And if we didn't know it already, we found out that there's a law which says that any individual can record the meeting and transmit that recording however they wish. I'm a little confused about what the objections are. I understand that there may be parts of the business that boards conduct that could be personal, private, confidential, or legally protected as confidential. Four different things I might point out. But if that's the case, if, if the argument was, well, we were discussing these things in a public meeting that wasn't recorded, but now that it's going to be recorded, we're concerned, I don't understand the problem. So, so the reason that I rise is first to say, we should vote no on the motion to refer back, but also to offer my experience and expertise. I did serve on the school committee for six years, and I did serve as chair for two of those years. So I'm intimately familiar with the law that covers executive session, and I would be happy to offer my services to the Board of Health and the cemetery trustees, and work with Town Council if necessary, to figure out if they have concerns about a particular item and how to protect that, if possible. I'm happy to help them do that. But these are public boards. Transparency is what we're after. Transparency is what we're after. Transparency should be what we're after. Let's move on. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think I had, so at this point, I'll just, I see three speakers, Ms. Dillon, Mr. Cuccello, and the, to your right, and then, then we may have a second round, but we're getting close, I think, to getting all the points out. Ma'am, you can just grab the, the stem just below, you see that grip? Pinch it, and it'll sink.
Apologize to the person after me. My name is Elizabeth Dillon. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. I think that many of us agree that it is important to have public meetings be public. However, I am too concerned, as Ms. Swenson mentioned earlier, and Ms. Kinsella mentioned earlier, I think there is a difference between having a public meeting that people can attend and having your private information be recorded on YouTube in perpetuity. However, I, like the gentleman before me, have a possible suggestion slash question for town council. Like everybody in Milton that's not an architect, I am an attorney. And I, until recently, was a litigator. And what we do in litigation is if there's a deposition and there's confidential, sensitive information after the fact, we take that information out so a person can make a request and essentially redact that information. Is there a way legally, because I'm not a public records law expert, is there, this is my question for town council, is there a way in which we can either real-time turn off the recording when we get to sensitive information and then turn it back on, or in the two-week period in which we have to put it on Milton Access? That's in the suggested, the Warren Article 39. Is it possible that an individual who's affected can request that their information be essentially redacted out from the video? Because I do think that it's different. I mean, I would think that common decency would prevent people from recording information about their neighbors hoarding or having, you know, other domestic violence, some of the concerns that we raised. But once something's on the internet, it's on the internet forever. So that's my question for town council. Thank you.
Mr. Mello, you recognized?
Thank you, Peter Mello, Town Council. That's a great question. And I was just telling a gentleman before the meeting that one thing that I like about town meetings is it gives me a perspective on what it must feel like to be the subject of a deposition, as opposed to the opposing council, which is, it's actually good, it's helpful. But the, Section 22 of 38 actually deals with this question expressly. And it says, the subparagra, subparagraph here is subparagraph E. "The minutes of any open session, the notes, recordings, or other materials used in the preparation of such minutes, and all documents and exhibits used at the session shall be public records in their entirety and not exempt from disclosure pursuant to any of the exemptions under Clause 26, the privacy exemption, or the definition of public records, 26 of Section 7 of Chapter 4. Now, withstanding this paragraph, the following material shall be exempt from disclosure to the public as personnel information. Materials used in a performance evaluation of an individual bearing on his professional competence, da-da-da-da, materials used in deliberations about employment or appointment of individuals, including applications and supporting materials. Provided, however, that any resume submitted by an applicant shall not be exempt." So, subject to those two, in this context, in opposite exemptions, the answer is no. It, they're public records in their entirety is how I would read Subparagraph E, and how I, that's how I sort of always interpreted that.
So you can't turn it off, and an individual cannot request a redaction?
No, turn, no, turning it off is a separate question. There's nothing that requires an open meeting to be recorded under the open meeting law. That would be something that would be mandated exclusively by the bylaw.
By this bylaw. But under this bylaw-
The bylaws, in its current form, to the extent that it doesn't contemplate the recording ever being terminated, you know, I guess that wouldn't be an option under the strict terms of the bylaw. There's language in the bylaw that addresses situations in which, in which there's a technological issue, you know, or an emergency meeting, or, you know, the like. But no, there's nothing in the bylaw that specifically would authorize the termination of a recording because the topic is, you know, particularly sensitive. But, but there's nothing in the state statute, in the open meeting law, that mandates that meetings be recorded.
Is there anything in the open meeting law, to her question, about an individual being able to request a redaction in that two-week period between recording and posting?
No, it just says, it just, it says, it enumerates among the items that are public records in their entirety, any meeting recordings, you know, obviously-
In their entirety.
In possession.
That is your question, then?
Or other documents, quote unquote, used at a meeting.
Do you have a follow-up, ma'am, or does that, yes?
So I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying. So in which case, then, my second suggestion of having it be essentially redacted out would not be lawful, but perhaps turning it off or turning on would be potentially lawful. In which case, I would ask that the body vote no to refer, not to refer it back, and that we can address either the means in which the other gentleman said, or one of the means in which I said, that we can deal with this issue while still respecting people's privacy. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're left with Mr. Cuccello next, and then the gentleman, yes. And then Ms. Milbauer, yes.
Thank you. Anthony Cuccello, Precinct Four, Town Meeting Member. I'll try to rebrief. We're on our second article tonight. We've accomplished four over the last two nights, so we're really moving. So the first issue, I recognize that these are public meetings that we're all talking about. So as, as has been discussed, someone could come in and broadcast it. For most of these committees, I think this is a no-brainer, that, that this article should be passed and that these should be publicized. The, the concerns raised about the Board of Public Health raised, concerned me. Those are the types of things that even if they could be recorded, maybe shouldn't be. I'm also concerned that we may or may not be dealing as best we can with what we put in an executive session in a Board of Health meeting. I understand the, the concern about going into executive session. Executive session interferes with the transparency of the public meetings, and all of the regulators construe those exceptions very narrowly. But it may be that, in fact, there are some of these situations that should and could be dealt with privately in the executive session. Maybe practical challenges in doing that, but, but I think that that's an issue that we can study some more. My suggestion today, I also agree with the speaker's view on subcommittees. At this point, we can leave those behind. If we want to add those later, we can do that later. But we should get the primary committees going. My recommendation to town meeting is that we vote no on the article to refer this back. And when we address this article, right now, we might want to slice out the Board of Health and not include that. Figure out how we can best protect the interests of the public. I don't know if the cemetery board should be kept out or not, but we can talk about that when and if we get to the main motion. But that's my suggestion, that town meeting vote to, vote no on the article, the recommendation to refer back, and then pass this article in some slightly amended form. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Yes, sir. Do you have something important and new to add tonight? Yes. No. Okay. We can save the time if you don't. Then, just a sec. Ms. Milbauer, you have a short bite at the apple, and then we'll stop.
Okay. Hi. I just want to say, Board of Health does really important work. I've been to their meetings, sometimes I'm the only one. It's really important work they do. And I don't think people realize the scope of what they do, actually. And I've been to a bunch of meetings where maybe there's one privacy item on the agenda, and the rest are really important public items. And maybe there's one or two, but the majority, that all the meetings I've been to, the majority are always public, of public interest. For example, they do flu clinics, and they have to decide where they go, what to do. The flu clinics actually are, are quite interesting, and I've heard their conversations around it, and it's important that the rest of us understand and know about it. The opioid conversation we just talked about, that's a lot of money that I think the public has access, should really be able to hear what those conversations are about. They do really important work. Caroline is underselling them, I think. They also, I was at a meeting a few months ago where they talked about smoking policy in public housing. It was a really thoughtful conversation. I was also there a few years ago when they changed the age to purchase tobacco from age 18 to 21. Like, these are really important community decisions. I think the convenience stores wanted to say something about it, and they came and spoke to that issue. And then think about COVID. I mean, COVID was a very public and important subject that we all were very involved with the Board of Health. I mean, all of us. It was a crisis.
Ms. Milbauer, if you could wrap it up.
All right. So that's one thing I'll say. So I think Caroline is underselling the Board of Health, because you all do a lot of important stuff that I think everyone would want to have a part of. So the second thing I want to say is-
Ms. Milbauer, you've used your 10 minutes, if you could really wrap it up.
Okay. Last thing I'll say is, I support protecting privacy. But to say, oh, we're not sure how we'll use executive session, if we're going to do it wrong or right, it's a very simple way to take care of it. You consult town council once a month before you post the agenda, and you go through the items that will be potentially private. And if town council doesn't know, then you get guidance from the state. So to not know how to do it doesn't seem a strong enough argument to say, we as the town can't have access to any of the other public information. So I'm opposed to exempting Board of Health. They do really important work that nobody knows.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, we'll have to wrap it up. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Peter Obershimer, Town Meeting Member.
Could you say your last name again, sir?
Obershimer.
Obershimer, thank you.
Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I almost wasn't going to go, and I'll be really quick, because I'm just going to agree with a point two speakers ago. I'm a no on the remand. I think we're on the 10-yard line. Let's figure this out tonight. I don't think we should make a habit of that when we're this close. I, I would, I'm interested in the idea of, you know, the amendment after the no on the remand, if that's the way we go, or we just strike health in Board of, or the Cemetery Trustees. For now, it's a simple amendment, just a preview, to just cross them off from that list for now. Maybe think of them like we're going to think about, let's just take a little bit more time, like with the subcommittees, how that's going to get figured out. I, I do think there's a pretty big distinction in the level of invasiveness of, you know, personal information about between an iPhone recording and the town recording, maintaining at a central location, this kind of information. So I think that's sort of just a, let's keep it going at a minimum on all the other committees. Let's do it for all the positive reasons discussed. Let's just carve those out, those other ones out for now. Let's get this done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At that point, at this point, Ms. Agostino, I think you've used your three minutes. I've been keeping track, so, yes. Now, Select Board, you said you were going to hold off until now on your opinion?
Mr. Moderator, Diana Tulio Agostino, Precinct Nine. Could you please clarify if my original questions, because I did not expand beyond one point, my original request that town council's explanation be clarified, and you yourself had asked for it? Because I do have, I, as a licensed health insurance provider, I have the HIPAA answer.
I'm sorry. What was your original question, ma'am? That was a while ago.
You were talking about the three minutes. And if you included within that three minutes the clarification that you requested as well as I-
I excluded that out. I stopped the timer, so.
All right. Well, I have the answer on HIPAA. As a licensed insurance agent.
On the Board of Health.
Yeah, on the Board of Health. So it's a distinct and important clarification.
Please state it quickly, then. Thank you.
Okay. I did state my name. I've never actually mentioned that license. The Board of Health handbook and manual that I searched through for HIPAA has no reference for it. So I then went to the HIPAA site, the HSS.gov site. The Health Insurance Portability and Accounting Act was enacted in 1996. It deals with who is covered, and the privacy rule, as well as the administrative simplifications apply to health plans, health plan, healthcare clearinghouses, and into any healthcare provider who transmits health insurance in electronic form in connection with the transactions in which the Secretary of the HHS has adopted the standards. Other towns do currently record their Board of Health. I know the question was asked, and I know it's a complicated answer, but the handbook clearly are, I adore and love the Board of Health. They have been a great help to us. However, with regards to this situation, they are not providing the medical care. They, they don't even have a system that would securely transmit it per HIPAA. It all has to be protected. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Select Board, you were going to hold off your opinion until now? Do you have an opinion?
Richard Wells, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven, Chair of the Select Board. The Select Board would not support referring it back.
Thank you. With that, do you have, War Committee going to amend any remarks? Does the War Committee's recommendation stand?
No place I'd rather be. I submit to you that this conversation that we are having here, the complex and profound issues that we have discussed tonight, is making our point. The issues here are too important to figure this all out tonight, are too important to just get it done. Some of the things that we have talked about here, we're talking about for the first time in any forum with regards to this article, such as, what if someone shows up with a cell phone to record? Just the fact that everyone has these things now and can whip them out in a private pla, in a public place, doesn't mean that there is no such thing as a right to privacy, does not mean that there is no such thing as privacy. It just simply means that the issue is more complicated. What's going to happen at a public meeting when that actually happens? It's going to shut that public meeting down. Something that we need to think about is how can a board handle it when a citizen brings out a cell phone to record for purposes of intimidation, for purposes of shutting down the conversation? As I said, this is the first time tonight that any of these profound issues involving privacy, involving people's lives, and how our town manages our obligation to these people are being brought up for the first time. The War Committee stands by its recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to a vote? Now, this is a motion to refer, only requires a majority vote. So here's your vote. If you are in favor of referring this back, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed to referring this back, you'll vote no on the motion to refer, and we'll keep talking about it. So if you vote yes, it will get referred back and we'll stop talking about it. If you vote no, it'll stay on the floor, and then we'll decide whether to pass it or not. Is that clear? Is that clear? Yes? Yes, okay. We'll open up the poll. So yes, if you are in favor of referring this back for further study. No, if you are opposed to referring this back, and we'll keep discussing it.
Say that again?
Seriously?
You just lost me for a second.
If you are in favor of referring this back, and we stop talking about it, and we go to the next article, you vote yes. If you are opposed to referring it back, and you want to keep discussing it, we vote no.
If you are blocking, yes, you're right.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. I am not lobbying. I'm explaining what a yes and a no vote means on a process article. In eight years, I've never taken a position on any article before this body, ever. Here's what a yes vote means. Please stop the vote. A motion to refer means, no, sir, I'm not going to take any more, you have a point of order, sir?
Point of order.
What's that?
I do think you are lobbying. I disagree with you. I don't think it's appropriate to say that we're going to stop discussing it. Explain what a yes or a no means, Jim Mulligan, Precinct 2. I agree. There's a lot of people in here who feel the same way, and to say that we're not feeling that is just, that's brushing us off. I disagree with that statement that you made. I think you are lobbying.
I'll repeat what a motion refer is. A motion to refer is when the body ceases discussion on an article, and that article is referred back to further study, in this case, to the Select Board that submitted it. A no vote on a motion to refer means the body wishes to continue to discuss the article and then dispose of it with a yes or a no vote. Is everyone clear on what a motion to refer is now? In that case, let's, we'll delete this, we will reopen the vote. Excuse me, we were interrupted, I was interrupted during this vote, so I would like to do this again. Now, we've been debating this for quite some time. Unless anyone has an amendment, at this point, I'm not going to accept any other discussion on the content of the article. I think it's been well debated and presented. Does anyone have any amendments they wish to offer to this article? Yes, Mr. Cuccelli, you're recognized, sir.
Yes, thank you. I would move to amend the article by striking the Board of Health from the article for the reasons that I stated before. I think that, at this point, there is enough uncertainty as to how those issues are treated. I think we can come back and put it back in if we think it makes sense. So that's my motion to strike the Board of Health.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on Mr. Cuccello's amendment? In that case, I'm sorry, we have a member coming down, yes. Anyone else want to discuss Mr. Cuccello's amendment to strike Board of Health? Please come down now. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. James Coyne, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8, also Chair of the Cemetery Trustees. I thank you for the amendment, but I also like to add the cemetery to that amendment, if possible, and the reason being is a privacy issue. Our board is probably, most of you members will never come to our board-
Mr. Coyne, just a sec. We can do one amendment at a time, so unless Mr. Cuccello is willing to accept that addition as a friendly, we'll pause on the cemetery.
So I would ask him to make a friendly amendment to his amendment, adding the cemetery.
That is your request. And Mr. Cuccello, you want to-
Yes. Mr. Moderator, I don't know how you want to handle this procedurally. I heard, we heard from the Board of Health before, they raised sufficient concerns for me that I thought, at least as a temporary basis, that we should take them out. I don't understand what the cemetery board issues are very well now, so I would like to hear from that before, you know, I would accept it as a friendly-
So I'll take that, you reject the friendly. So, sir, we're not talking about the cemeteries right now, we're only talking about the Board of Health. After we deal with the Board of Health, we can come back to you if that's all right.
Very good.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak to the Board of Health, other than, we have two speakers, and that's it? Three speakers, on the, just on the Board of Health. Okay. Who was sitting, I didn't, who was sitting first? Ms. Milbauer, you're first?
Deborah Milbauer, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. I rise to oppose the amendment. I'd really like to include Board of Health. They do a lot of important work, and we will be excluded from it if they are exempt. And so, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I think, yes, ma'am, I believe you're next? I don't think you want to talk about the Board of Health, correct?
I want to make a different amendment.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, you're next.
I disagree with the amendment, and I actually would like-
Could you state your name and precinct, please?
Beverly Ross Denny, Precinct 2. I actually think there's another way that we can address this, which would be a different amendment, but I'm so sorry, I thought you could hear me. Anyways, Beverly Ross Denny, Precinct 2. I disagree with the amendment, because I think there's an opportunity, as Liz Dillon mentioned, to just redact it. Because, to Deborah Milbauer's point, there is very important information being shared, and if simply redacting it allows us to get all of it, I think it's worth the expense.
Thank you. Ms. Agostino, we're there next, I think?
Diana Tulio Agostino, Precinct 9. Almost forgot, it's been so long. However, I stand to repeat one point I made previously, that I considered this amendment. However, I strongly oppose it now, because other towns, no one has told us, how many other towns in the state do include both the Board of Health and the cemetery? Many other towns. We always would research other towns. We're not rewriting all these laws. I read the law that every open meeting can be taped. Town Council read the law, every open meeting can be taped. I therefore oppose this, because the other two laws that support all of these open meeting laws to be taped are the American Disabilities Act, to give them the ability to view it from home, as well as the open meeting law, which clearly supports it. So I strongly oppose this, and if, and as I said, I totally support, the Board of Health is wonderful, but I'm sure the Town of Milton doesn't even have the program that's required under HIPAA to be used. So if we're talking about serious concerns and the public ability to learn things, I'd really like to know if a restaurant has been shut down. I'd like to know if there are rats somewhere in the East Milton Square that we've heard about. I'd like to know those things, not by attending the meeting. Just to list a few of the items. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Hello. My name is Kendra Quinzinoff, and I am a member of Precinct 3. I am standing here because I think that we absolutely should be including the Board of Health in these recordings. And my reason for that is not because I am against privacy for individual situations, but that the concept of public health, as discussed previously, is something that impacts all of us. Individual situations, I think, should be addressed by the staff that we have, that we have hired to do these jobs. I am a licensed mental health counselor here in Milton, and I have worked in community mental health for many years, and it is my passion. I believe strongly that we should be including people who are trained to work on these things individually with people before they become public issues. I hope that you will consider this.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, you're next.
Hi, Jackie Munger. I am TMM from Precinct 7, and I'm against this amendment. I do think people have their right to privacy, full stop, and I think a public meeting is a public meeting. It is not private. The issue of private matters being discussed at public meetings is an issue in itself, and something that needs to be resolved. So it was already raised that people can record with their phones, they can post that, they have that opportunity. So I do think it's in the best interest of the public that we figure that out. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Verone?
Karen Friedman Hanna, Precinct 2. I also rise in opposition to this amendment. Sorry, Tony, I usually agree with you. But I feel strongly that there would be a way to define executive session for the Department of Public Health more fully, so that the privacy, the privacy issue can be taken into consideration, if it's individuals that are up for some kind of complaint discussion, that there be time set aside for every meeting, as somebody said, where it's posted beforehand, that there will be executive session as a portion of the meetings, and anything that's on an individual basis would first be discussed in executive session, and then, if it's something where it needs to be brought into more of the public domain without executive session, the Chair of the Committee can choose to do that. So I don't, I think that this can be better defined along the way, and I think it must be better defined. I think we've probably been deficient in that, quite honestly. And so I strongly recommend us voting against the amendment and voting to keep the Department of Public Health, and I would say the cemetery for the same reason, without knowing the specifics, that it can be defined for the privacy issue, can be discussed in executive session, and we outline what those things are beforehand, and then put it into play in a more consistent manner. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Dillon, I think you were next. She had a different, she's on a different thread.
I have a different one.
Nothing. Then, no one else I see wants to come down and speak on the motion to amend? Given that, this is a majority motion, if you are, I'm sorry, warrant committee, yes, submitting board with select board. Select Board, do you have an opinion on the motion to amend? No, you have a question? Sidebar, all right.
Dave Humphries, Chair of the Warrant Committee. It is the Warrant Committee recommendation for a yes vote on the amendment.
The Select Board, Richard Wells, Precinct 7, Chair of the Select Board. The Select Board is also a yes vote on the recommendation to amend.
Thank you. We'll proceed to a vote. Again, this is a majority vote on striking the words "Board of Health" from the article that you see printed on page 55. If you are in favor of striking those words, which is the motion to amend, please signify by voting yes, or no, or abstain. So the language "Board of Health" now remains in the article. So, with that, the next person up, I think, was you, sir, on your cemetery topic.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. James Coyne, Town Meeting, Precinct 8, and Chairman of the Trustees of the Cemetery. I would make a motion to strike the trustees of the cemetery from the recording of the open meeting laws.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone wish to discuss, did you have any further points to offer, sir?
I apologize for not coming down early. I wasn't sure, one was a good time to come down, but I'm here. So Cemetery Trustees deal with, sadly, a lot of sad news, and we deal with information from correspondence, from funeral directors, from healthcare providers, from family members, from hospice groups, that identify people's personal health data, circumstances surrounding their death, including SIDS, suicide, which is all discussed in correspondence. If there's a way around it through executive session, we have no issues with going through executive session. If there isn't a way, then we would ask to be removed from it. Presently, we record all our meeting notes and list them as correspondence, but there is a lengthy discussion from some of these family members that talk to us about impending death, that a lot of people shouldn't have information to, and they like to keep it private, and we'd like to keep it private on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion to amend, striking trustees of the cemetery from the article? I see no one, yes, Mr. Musto. If anyone else wishes, please come down, otherwise we'll go to a vote.
Hi, Mike Musto, Precinct 5, Town Meeting Member. I just want to follow up on what our colleague from Precinct 8 mentioned, the Cemetery Trustee. I guess my question, I appreciate bringing up personal identifiable information. I guess it's more like a question for Town Council. I'm not that familiar with the Cemetery Board of Trustees' meetings, but in terms of the PII, right, that gets brought up, is there an exception that's available to shield that in executive session? I know that PII is, you know, you can get a lot of information from someone's birthdate, for example, so I'm just curious what Town Council's opinion is on that.
Is your question, can the Board of Cemeteries go into executive session to shield personal information?
Yeah, that's correct.
Town Council, is that clear?
Peter Mello, Office of Town Council. I mean, I think the, again, I'd go back to the response to one of the prior questions. It depends if it's circumstance and contents, context-specific. But just to give you a flavor, I'm at the, I'm in the open meeting law determinations repository right now, and I'm-
Little closer to the mic, sir.
Okay, sorry. I inherited a kind of a soft tone from my mom, so apologies. I'm going to type in "executive session" and "cemetery" to give you a flavor for how many open meeting law determinations address that issue, or related issues. So I see one involving a cemetery commission, for what, you know, whatever that's worth. If, if there's a statute, and, you know, it strikes me that there might be a statute that would mandate confidentiality with respect to issues that a cemetery commission would be addressing, but that's the question on the purpose 7. But again, if you're, if you're using that as a basis to go into executive session, the substance of the discussion has to, you know, remain within the parameters of the exception and the purpose. And so, it's all, it kind of depends on the nature of the discussion and how it evolves, but if there's some statutory basis to, you know, to, that would mandate, some statute that mandates confidentiality with respect to one item that the cemetery commission is discussing, then, you know, perhaps that would be a valid basis to go into executive session.
Very good. I see no other speakers coming down to speak to the motion to amend. So with that, I'll restate, the motion before the body is to strike the word trustee, sorry, words, trustees of the cemetery from the article that you see on page 55. All those in favor of striking those words, please signify by voting yes. Opposed, vote no, otherwise abstain. Opposed, vote no, otherwise abstain. Do we have enough votes? Are they coming in? Yes, okay, we can close the poll. The motion to amend fails by a vote of 150 to 81. Now, we had some members down here wishing to speak. Yes, ma'am, would you wish to address the body? We're back to the article as printed in the warrant, no changes. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, good evening. Lizzie Carroll, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, Chair of the School Committee. I appreciate all the conversation tonight. The School Committee has discussed this, and many of the nuances and complexities that have emerged through this discussion were present in our discussion. The majority of the School Committee is in favor of this article. I, as Chair, obviously do appreciate the need for support from staff, from council, to appropriately use executive session when that's called for. And I have not served as Chair of Board of Health or Cemetery Trustees, so I can't be in your shoes. And also, I think we agree with the general principles around transparency and accessibility for our community to this important information that's being discussed in public settings. The amendment that I wanted to offer, as a friendly amendment, Ms. Milbauer actually referenced in her original statement at the beginning of this, would simply be to include, among the exceptions, retreat, or more specifically, governance retreat, which is another form of meeting that the School Committee undertakes, which, at which there are no action items taken, there are no votes taken, and we think it would be appropriate to include as an exception, similar to the site visits and meetings conducted on property that the Town of Milton does not own or lease. So the friendly amendment would be to add executive sessions, retreats.
Might I suggest you add a new row between site visits and executive sessions that are, is your phrase "government retreat"? Is that the official phrase?
Governance, governance retreats, where we are working through our governance as a board. So yes, sure, a line following lease, semicolon, new line, governance retreats.
Semicolon.
New line.
As a friendly amendment to the, at this point, it is a recommendation, back to the Select Board, so since this is your article, Select Board, it's up to you to accept the friendly. If not, we'll go for a second and do that drill.
Richard Wells, Chair of the Select Board, we would accept Chair Carroll's friendly amendment.
And Warrant Committee, do you, what are your thoughts on accepting the friendly?
Can we have no recommendation at this time?
Yes.
We have no recommendation at this time. We have not had an opportunity to have a discussion. We have not had an opportunity to delve into this issue with regards to what is a retreat, et cetera. We have no recommendation at this time. We prefer not to draft bylaws on the floor of Town Meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone now wish to, anyone else wish to speak to this article? Ms. Dillon, you've been sitting here, any different amendment? Then now's the time to make it, because this language has now been changed, because the language as you see has now been modified with a friendly amendment. I'm sorry, are you asking to see it on the screen? Just, let's give her a minute. Or while she's doing that, Ms. Dillon, do you have an amendment? Yes, you can go ahead and make that.
Thank you, I have my amendment from earlier. I have a language that I wrote up that I can provide to the clerk, if that's helpful, or I could read it out, but it's kind of lawyerly and long, either way.
If you could read it out, and then we'll hand it.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, let me turn to my handy-dandy warrant here. So, above where it says "in the event of technology failure," I would propose a new paragraph that reads as follows. Provided, comma, however, comma, that an individual may request, comma, on their own behalf, or on behalf of their minor child, comma, that the elected public body cease recording to protect, protect, excuse me, confidential information, period. Such request shall be allowed, comma, if at all, comma, if approved by the majority of the members of the public body, and only to the extent permitted by applicable law. Upon the conclusion of any discussion of such confidential information, as determined by the Chair of the public body, the recording shall commence forthwith.
And you've given that in writing to the Warrant Committee clerk? While she's doing that, Ms. Dillon, could you describe, by the way, do we have a second? We have a second. Would you describe the, the point behind your amendment?
I know, because although many people in town are attorneys, not all of us are. So essentially, what I wanted to do was to have my amendment from earlier that I had mentioned, which is, my understanding is that by law, we may turn off the recording in the event that we're going to discuss confidential information, and then turn it back on once we're done. That's what I'm trying to do.
This will take a minute to record up on the screen. I think before we debate this amendment, let's pause and make sure it's up there and everybody can see it. Mr. Walker, do you have a point about this amendment that's relevant to the body?
I think not. I have a question about the friendly amendment.
Then, would you just ask, what's your question? Ms. Dillon, is the language correct?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Can everyone now read this language up on the screen? Is that better? Okay, we now have, you've had a chance to absorb the information and hear the intent by Ms. Dillon. Speakers, I think, the only speaker I see on this at the moment is not you, yes, and also Mr. Chinman, he wished to speak to this motion to amend. Yes, please.
Michael Chinman, Precinct 2, I'm opposed to this amendment. I think it's going to be logistically very difficult. The confidential information might be just very fleeting in nature to interrupt the whole proceedings, have a, a vote by the members of the public body on whether the recording needs to be stopped, and then if it's not fleeting, if it's somewhat extended and the recording's not going to get turned back on, and also if the Chair of the public body is just opposed to this being recorded, it gives them too much discretion to decide not to turn it back on. I think this is unnecessary. I think there could be more circumspection by the members of the public body not to reveal unnecessary personally identifying information, and I oppose this amendment.
Thank you, sir. By the way, Mr. Walker had a different point, so we won't that. Ms. Agostino, were you trying to speak? And then, anyone else? Okay, Ms. Agostino, then you, sir.
Diane DeTulio-Agostino, Precinct 9, and I oppose, well, first of all, I have a question for Town Council. I had only heard about these retreats. I had not heard the term "governance retreat."
Ma'am, we're not talking about that right now. We're on the motion to amend, on just the blue language up here.
Oh, the bottom part? Okay, well, with regard to the second one, I oppose it, because as it was just reported, if you think that you could just sit in a meeting and all of a sudden turn it on and off, the open meeting law and other laws, like the executive session laws, definitely come into play, and Milton, like so many other towns that are public and open and recorded, can just learn, and the faster we learn, the better it will be for all of us. But I'd like to point out, the section that says "on behalf of their minor child," we do have residents, adult residents in this town, who have guardians. So that section completely ignores that someone who may not be capable of speaking up for themselves, who have a legal guardian appointed for them, if that suggestion was even to go through, it would be ignoring the needs of those individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Brian Burns, Precinct 4. My, my suggestion was going to be a friendly amendment to this, to change "their minor child" to "their dependent."
Ma'am, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, and I think that would also take care of Diane's concern as well, so thank you. I shouldn't speak for her, but, yes, I agree with, I agree with Mr. Burns's friendly amendment. Thank you.
So, the amendment is delete the word "minor child" and replace it with the word "dependent," correct? Mr. Burns, that's your intent? Yes. That's what you've accepted? Yes. Could we just put that language up first so everyone can see it? Now, that's a fairly simple point. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion to amend? Ma'am, you just did, unless you have- All right, then you're, this is your second time to speak, and then you're done on this motion to amend.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moderator. I would appreciate the opportunity, as Town Meeting Member of Precinct 9, to once again identify a legal guardian is not necessarily an dependence, dependent. It's a legal issue, and it needs to be clarified, because it's not right to make an assumption on such an important situation.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Dillon, the correct language is now in here? Yes, "their dependent." Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion to amend? So, the motion before the body is to, ignoring the governance retreats above, which we already accepted, it's just the blue language that starts with "provided, however that", and ends with "the recording shall commence forthwith." That is our motion to amend. You have a question on this, Ms. Harrington? Yes, please.
Nora Harrington, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. I guess I just feel like, at this point, this is a bit superfluous. We've already talked about the use of executive session as an opportunity for boards to, you know, have time to discuss private matters. So, you know, I feel like we're starting to complicate things further here. So I would urge my fellow Town Meeting Members to vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll now go to the Select Board. Select Board, what's your opinion on this motion to amend?
Richard Wells, Chair of the Select Board. The Select Board would support this amendment.
And Warrant Committee?
With regards, Dave Humphreys, Chairman, Warrant Committee. With regards to this proposed amendment, as with the previous one, we have no recommendation at this time.
Thank you. With that, we will go to a vote. So, you are voting on the language started with "provided, however," and ending with that paragraph that was, you just saw, all in favor of amending the article per that text, please signify by voting yes. Opposed, vote no. Abstaining, vote abstain, or press nothing. The amendment fails by a vote of 156 to 65. Then lastly, Mr. Walker, you had one question on the word "governance retreats."
I did. I'm moving from side to side of the auditorium. I was trying to go to the bathroom, but- The, the request for clarification, I know that with a friendly amendment, no vote is required if the maker of the motion, that would be the Select Board, accepts the friendly amendment, so that's done. But I'd like some clarification from the School Committee on what governance retreats means, because in my experience, School Committee retreats have included discussions of strategic planning, strategic priorities, budget priorities, all sorts of community outreach issues. So I would hope that those things are not covered by the term "governance retreat." So I'd just like some clarification on that. Thank you.
Ms. Carroll, we'll start with you, yes.
Thank you, Lizzie Carroll, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, School Committee Chair. So, yes, these retreats, I think we have begun to implement in partnership with Dr. Burrows, our superintendent. They are times where we, I mean, I will just tell you, all they are public meetings. They are posted. We share a meal together. We share a meal together. We reflect on how things are going in our working relationships together as committee members and working in partnership with our superintendent. We have done book study in these retreats. We have reviewed best practices from other districts when it comes to, for example, something we spent a great deal of time on this year in these retreat settings. We had four, was the development of the first handbook of operating procedures for the School Committee, which is moving towards completion. So what is discussed in these retreat settings, which are very informal and, you know, sort of are our opportunity to build teamwork and sort of have open channels of communication. They actually lead into formal discussions with action items at our regular School Committee meetings, which we do voluntarily record. And so that is a little bit perhaps of an evolution around the way the School Committee has been using retreats. But I think when we, you know, I would be okay with the friendly amendment to actually just be retreats, not necessarily specifying governance retreats. The thing about a retreat is, if you think about, yes, in regular School Committee meetings, certainly we are discussing and approving our goals on an annual basis. What happens in a retreat setting prior to that is, if you could picture the time you spend together with like poster paper on the walls, like brainstorming and sort of working through ideas that lead you to the ability to set goals, that is what we're doing in retreat settings, and we're choosing to do that. We have been taking these meetings on-site, honestly, because we aren't spending taxpayer dollars to go off-site to do these retreats, but they are not full School Committee meetings. I hope that clarifies. Nothing discussed in these retreat settings is not then formalized in a full School Committee meeting, but the way we work productively in this setting is actually just as a small group. And again, members of the community could come and sit in the room with us if they choose to do that. I hope, does that clarify, Mr. Walker? If governance is confusing, I think we could just say retreats. But off-sites are often, this is what people often mean when they refer to off-sites. We just don't go off-site always for these, so that's why we wanted to offer this amendment. Hope that makes sense. Thanks.
Mr. Walker, did that, any follow-up? Did that answer your question?
It doesn't allay the concern, but I think what's done is done, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Furs, want to be recognized?
Hi, Brian Furs, Precinct 10. I have sat in front of this Town Meeting for 11 years. I've been on the proposition end of many changes in bylaws. And candidly, all of them that I've proposed have been sent back for further study because we have a long history in this town of making sure that we don't pass anything before it's perfect. I don't agree with that generally, but I also am now seeing that working on zoning or bylaw changes in a Town Meeting setting, when we don't have proper legal counsel, we don't have necessarily board guidance, this is not a good way to do this. We have spent two-plus hours on this, and there's no consensus in this room. So I'm going to go ahead and do it. I'm going to make a motion that we send this back for further study.
All right, just to do that, there is, that is possible. However, it has to be made by someone that voted in favor of sending it back for further study. You did. Honor system, so we don't have to check, Mr. Furs? We can check. Okay, so Mr. Furs voted to refer this back to further study, which he is allowed to do. We are within the hour of when we took the vote. So within an hour, we're now opening up the motion to refer it back. Now, is there a second on? There's a second. Just, hang on, Mr. Walker, just want to explain where we are. So, we're not amending, we're not voting on the article at this point. We have, we are reconsidering a prior motion. Pardon me, I have a question from the Town Clerk. So now, by the way, a motion to reconsider, which is all we're talking about, within an hour only requires a majority vote. Does anyone wish to discuss the motion to refer back now that's been made and seconded? Yes, Mr. Walker?
Quick point of order. So I think the correct way to handle it is, Mr. Furs has to make a motion...
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
I think the correct way to handle it is, Mr. Furs has to make a motion to reconsider first. He can't, he can't make a motion...
Sorry, you're right.
He can't make a motion to refer back.
You are right. He is making a motion to reconsider the, you're right.
And we should, the body considers that. If that passes, then we go from there.
You're right, I misspoke. We are making a motion to reconsider the prior motion to refer. So we're opening that decision back up. And it was seconded, thank you.
Point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
Diane DeTulio-Agostino, Precinct 9. Originally, some time ago, when we, when I stood to discuss the governance retreats, you said, "We're holding off on that discussion". It was also raised, the point by Mr. Walker, we began that discussion. Can we legally actually add another motion while we're in the middle of discussing governance retreats? Even though it was a friendly amendment, we have to have the opportunity to close out the discussion on that, I believe.
Good question. I think not, because Mr. Walker didn't object or seek to modify it. He just asked to clarify it in question, and then it was accepted as a friendly, and so we don't have to discuss that, but I just needed to talk to Town Council for a minute.
Yeah, and you did hear from the proponent of that amendment that she'd be, come on, what's the word? Amenable to the words being used, governance and retreats, because I still haven't gotten the ability to ask the question, "What are these? I have never heard about them until recently."
We'll come back to that, just a second. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, Tom Callahan, Precinct 4. What, can we have the time of the actual vote that we're reconsidering?
Yes.
Thank you.
The Town Clerk keeps time. Madam Clerk?
Excuse me, the time was 9:24.
So we're still within the hour. Now, does anyone else wish to speak to this motion to reconsider, which opens it back up? Yes, sir.
Mark Croninger, Precinct 7. Mr. Furs, I think, was his name, I'm in full support of you. We're sitting here splitting hairs on terms like governance and nuance of retreats, and we're so far down a rabbit hole here on these type of things. Obviously, there needs to be more reconsideration of this thing, of this article. And we already had a commitment from the Select Board that they would put this back on the next Town Meeting. If I've ever seen a, an issue that needs more discussion, unless this is how every issue goes, it sounds like this one should go back, so, there you go. Mr. Furs, thank you for suggesting that.
Thank you. Just a minute. Yes, ma'am, on the motion to reconsider?
Yeah.
If you pinch that grip?
Yep. Karen Friedman-Hanna, Precinct 2. I'm sorry, I strongly disagree that this needs to go back. I recall a few years back, we spent hours on a comma, trying to figure out where that comma goes. This is part of it. This has been discussed. This is not the type of thing that requires the Select Board to reconsider this article. This is a slight nuance to it. We've discussed it. There are very, very good reasons to have this in place. If there is something down the road that becomes a glaring issue, we can modify after the fact. This is something that should be in place now. We have spent all of these hours doing this. This is worth getting done tonight. I am sorry, I totally disagree with putting this back over this. Please do not send this back for reconsideration and vote to get this in and let us move forward with a positive thing for our town.
Okay. Ms. Agostino, we'll get your question. I promise we'll get your question on the governance topic. But just on the motion to reconsider. I'm sorry, do you ever, why don't you state your question then, ma'am?
Has I requested the legal, come on?
Definition, process?
No, the process. We have before us a discussion. We were in the middle of discussing the governance retreats. So that was under discussion, and all of a sudden, a new motion was entered, and you said, "Let me meet with Town Council", I believe. He came up to you. And so what was the answer regarding getting to the, getting the answers in discussion for governance retreats that I don't even know what they are, I stated? And all of a sudden, jumping into another motion, it's overlapping.
Okay, I understand your question now. So when a friendly amendment arises, it's when a member is suggesting a small wording change to the person that wrote the article or has the motion before the body. So, that doesn't require a second. So the friendly amendment goes to the Select Board, since they wrote this article. And they accepted the phrase "governance retreats" in the article. As soon as they do that, that language becomes part of the article, and the discussion is now accepted. If they had said, "No, we don't accept that", then someone could have said, "Okay, I want to put a second on that", and we would have debated governance retreats. So that's why governance retreats was closed, and we were then able to go move on to other business, ma'am.
However, I pointed out as a point of order that the proponent of governance retreats suggested that if it was agreeable to remove the word "governance", which I would second, because I still don't know governance retreats. So we all need to know what law provides us to even have governance retreats before we can move into another motion. We have not gotten the point of order clarified.
The reason I didn't take any action is because I didn't actually hear a friendly amendment. I heard Ms. Carroll said she might be willing to accept it, but no one offered it, so we paused. So it's no one offered it. I took that as moving on. That's how I'm resolving the point of order. So, where we are now is the motion to reconsider the motion to refer, which means we'd open it back up. We're within an hour. It only requires a majority vote. So if you are in favor of reconsidering that motion to refer, not actually doing it, reconsidering it, we'll put the poll up, vote yes. If you are opposed to re-discussing the motion to refer, you will vote no. Is that clear? Okay. And we'll open up the poll. I'll say it again. Let me say it again. If you are in favor of reopening the motion to refer, not actually referring it, just reopening the decision to do it, then you'll vote yes. If you are opposed to re-discussing the motion to refer, you'll vote no. Clear? The motion to reconsider fails by a vote of 152 to 70. So now we are back to the article itself that has been amended with the word "governance retreats". Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? I think it has been fully debated at this point. It is, by the way, it is a bylaw. It only requires a majority vote. It's not like a planning board article, which requires two-thirds. Bylaw changes require a majority vote. So if we could clear this vote, tech team? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Carroll?
Friendly amendment to remove the word "governance".
Ma'am, at this point, so you want to remove the word "governance" from your own, was it your friendly amendment? No, is Ms., yes?
Yes, I'm just trying to help us find consensus to get through this.
I think we may have consensus, ma'am, and I think we've made an amendment, and you're now going to amend your own language? I think not at this point.
Okay.
Thank you. We can always come back and address this in some future Town Meeting. As much as everyone is looking forward to that, yes. So with that, all in favor of the article as printed with the friendly amendment on page 55, please signify by voting yes. All opposed to the article, vote no. Abstain, vote abstain. The article passes by a vote of 170 to 52. Now, ladies and gentlemen, it's 10:20. Normally, I'd go back to Article 6. This has been a doozy. That's Town Meeting Time Language, by the way. I would entertain a motion to adjourn till tomorrow night. Is there a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. We are adjourned till tomorrow night at 7:30.